Well, today the Board took up a number of action items pertaining to the Valley Fire. The one of the greatest interest has to do with allowing temporary deferrals of current zoning and code provisions that would allow those victims that have suffered loss to get back on their property and occupy that property during the time of rebuilding. And the urgency ordinance right now sets the stage that those properties of 40,000 square feet or larger would allow people to come on without moving through certain criteria on an interim basis with FEMA modulars or trailers or RVs. But there is a pathway for those individuals that have square footage lots of less than 40,000, and for point of reference, 40,000 square feet is almost an acre. And those individuals that have smaller lots that would like to move through the process on a faster track have the ability, once the property is cleaned up, to file for a building permit. And in so doing, those individuals that have smaller lots will be able to temporarily, and the key is for any of these parcels, it's a temporary basis, to occupy their lot during time of construction. However, they have within one year to complete the construction of their primary residence through that permitted track. And that's really what seemed to be a little bit contentious today, but I think our Board demonstrated the second prong or the track that would allow even those individuals with smaller lots to have a path to success to rebuild, and nobody would be denied or precluded so long as they follow that criteria.
Tony, how consistent are these local ordinances with the newly enacted Governor's Executive 令?
The order that was issued by the Governor, this ordinance, that the urgency that we acted upon today is consistent within the spirit of that. However, it does defer to local jurisdictions to exercise their police powers, and that's exactly what we did today. We've complied with his order, but we set that criteria, that threshold of square footage of 40,000 feet or greater, close to an acre. And there's a myriad of reasons why we do that. It has to do with public safety, making sure the property is properly cleaned up, making sure that the public at large isn't exposed, specifically children, to toxic exposure, and also allow that such rebuilding doesn't conflict with surrounding neighbors and landowners. And so that action today is consistent with the intent and spirit within the Governor's order as passed and adopted by the State of California.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Lake County Board of Supervisors meeting. This is our October 13th meeting of the year 2015. We stand as customary with a moment of silence. Mayor Martin Schill, would you please lead us in the pledge?
With my pleasure. Chair? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a number of timed items. This is a special meeting that's called to deal with a number of issues pertaining to Valley Fire. I'll make it noted that we do not have any scheduled citizens input on today's agenda. We have a request from Ms. Moss. There is no citizen's input. However, if you would like to speak on any of these items that are forthcoming, you'll be forwarded the opportunity to do so. You'll be able to speak to those items publicly. Let's begin with item 4.1. This is our one PM item. This is a status report and updates and response and recovery efforts from county departments, assisting agencies, and/or community groups, consequent to the 2015 Wildland Fires, before we get into some of the agencies, board members, et cetera. Matt, would you like to kick off some of the items to direct to this discussion?
Yeah, I specifically communicated with Jennifer Fitz, Deputy Social Services Director, and she's, as you know, involved with a local assistance center and housing issues and so forth. And so I think she's prepared to give a report. This is just kind of a general statement, a general agenda item. If there's other departments, Health Services, or any other departments that would like to give reports, the Board have questions. I thought it was just a good, wise to have a standard agenda item like this.
Okay. Chair, could you come on up? Start with you. Please state your first and last name for the record.
Yeah, me. I'm Jennifer Fitz, Deputy Social Services Director.
Edgar Perez, Superintendent of Social Services.
I know Carol's already briefed you on a lot of these pieces.
Could you please speak up a bit? We're having a party here. Okay. Go ahead and pull the microphones a little bit closer to you and see if that amplifies.
Is that better?
Speak louder. Let's try.
We'll just talk louder.
Now we can have staff adjust the volumes on the speaker system if that's possible.
How about now? Okay. I don't have that problem.
Yeah.
So I know that Carol's already briefed you on quite a bit of what's happened. Last weekend FEMA came in and the local assistance center transitioned into the disaster recovery center. They're still continuing to provide services from the Middletown Senior Center. They also have the location in Clear Lake at the Burns Valley Mall, and they have mobile units as well. During the time that I was there, we saw we had more than 4,000 families check in over a two-week period of time. Right now, the agencies that are there are state and federal agencies, and then there are a lot of information there for the local nonprofit agencies as well as other county departments. Edgar's primarily been working on our housing piece. We have placed 42 folks at Monticar Harbor Inn, and we have 20 people in hotels since FEMA's come in and approved a TSA program, Transitional Shelter Assistance, and then also a rental assistance program. We've been working closely with them to transition the folks that we have housed into FEMA assistance.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't. The only thing I would mention is that we've worked closely with both FEMA and CAL OES on the folks who are still out in Hidden Valley Lake and Blue Sponge. I understand that there's some folks still out there that may not necessarily qualify for FEMA. We're working with them to get names from them so we can help them out. I think that if the county's able to help those, specifically those people who don't qualify for FEMA, it would be a great benefit to the community.
Questions or comments from the Board members on this?
Well, I think just some clarification on what that means, what people that aren't going to qualify for FEMA. Those are people with insurance. And what else?
An example?
Not necessarily. We have some families that if they do not have somebody in the home who has a social security number, they will not be able to qualify for FEMA. We have a few of those families. We haven't identified them yet.
An example that FEMA brought to us this morning was a family that applied and had been denied because their home was still considered livable by FEMA, but for the family, their home wasn't considered livable. So in a circumstance like that, we're going to go with FEMA and figure out where we go from there based on their circumstances. I think we're going to have a lot of situations where people might not fit into the roles that we all have, so we're just going to be doing a lot of one-on-one work to figure out how the best move forward to help them.
One thing that, I don't know if other Board members are receiving calls, and it's related to the action that we have taken, and Supervisor Brown brought to us last week about price gouging specifically for rental housing, is clearly apparent that landlords are moving in that direction. In fact, I got a call yesterday with a constituent who made an application on a rental for $1,500, and then after accepting that application, increased it above the 10% to $7,000. So my question is, with staff or our Board, is what can we do with the media to get that information out in terms of the punitive nature of that type of action and conduct here in the community? Because obviously, it's not on the radar for a lot of landlords or homeowners.
I don't know how it can be addressed. I think definitely the Board, it would be, I think it would be on your shoulders to do that.
But what should we done? You know, we acted.
And I think we rarely receive any calls that are very specific as to how much they are charging for rent. We get a lot of calls from individuals who have rentals available. We don't get any too specific as to how much they're renting. They're just giving us their names so we can put them on the list number, but we're not getting too specific as to how much they are, they're charging for rent. But I can't see that being a problem.
Yeah, well, it's, same in its here. So where's the round?
Well, that's not, you know, it's a violation of Peel Code, so it's something the DA should be addressing regarding housing. Basically, our action reinforced the state law, and then we imposed a fine. It was double what the state recommendation was, so I would forward those to the DA. That's the only example that I've been given, is that if you were given, and not knowing what the initial rent was on that, we don't know if it was raised beyond the scope of 396, I don't know, we're not sure what details. I would send it to the DA's office.
As we work more with these, I imagine that if it is happening, that we'll see it more as we're working with our families. So that's great to know.
Yeah. Anything else regarding the housing aspects, or services? I don't know if you want to remain seated as we move forward. I don't know, do we have representatives from CAL OES present that would like to provide any update? Anything you want to add for today, or?
Nothing to add today, thank you.
Okay. CAL FIRE, anybody in CAL FIRE? Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Martin, is there anything you would like to add at this time?
Can I just, you know, I guess the, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but the cleanups we got, you know, they've started cleaning up lots in Middletown and Rocky Fire area is already, I think, I don't see Ray, is Ray here?
Please.
Yeah, is Rocky Fire cleanup done, or is he still working on that?
In progress.
Okay. The cleanup is, is taking place right now in Middletown with CAL Recycle and Pacific Stays, and there are some cleanup occurring through private contractors on a lock loaned area today as well. So it is, there is cleanup effort begun.
Supervisor Comstock?
Well, in regard to that, I've seen some of the cleaned up, cleaned up properties. They're amazing. It's look ready to go. And in addition to that, ones that they're not yet able to get to, they're sending water trucks around and watering it down so that there's no migration of the dust that's crusting all around. I personally see that, and that's screaming. And some of the private people have been moving forward. I've seen several private ones get tested. We're a haul lot away, we get a receipt for it.
Anything else? Anybody have any public input on housing updates regarding the fire? Please come up and state your first and last name for the record. You'll have three minutes at the lectern.
It's actually about cleanup. Is this the appropriate time?
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate. We don't have anything that specifically would preclude that on the subsequent items, so yeah.
Thank you. So my name is Christopher Rowland, R-O-W-L-A-N-D. I have lived in Anderson Springs for 12 years since the fire. What I just have found out, first of all, we have 13 massive dug pines down on our property. They never were exed. The trees in, along the road were taken down. They had x's on them. I fully understood that. Some of the ones taken down on the property, I believe, could have survived, but now I have 13 massive trees down on the property, and CAL Recycle is now telling me that since they've been cut down already, CAL Recycle will not remove them. Whereas if the trees had been left standing and there were hazard trees, CAL Recycle would have removed them. This is a huge dilemma for me, and I'm assuming for many people in Anderson Springs and through the mountains, because I can't possibly afford to get 13 massive dug pines off my property. And so I'm asking for help. There's got to be a way for the cleanup to be expanded to include this.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. I'm working on that today. I've worked on it yesterday and today. It's, I can, I think I can safely say that you will not be responsible for the removal of those trees. There is, there's a lot of work going in. First of all, the tree removal has subsided significantly because it is a problem. And I toured with PG&E and CAL FIRE, and I've spoken with CAL Trans and Scott, Aile from the county, on exactly what's going on with the trees in the right of way, PG&E trees, and trees on private property. So we're dealing with those. Next Monday at 6 o'clock at the Cobb School, I'm holding a public meeting regarding the tree removal and what has occurred. All agencies will be represented there that are responsible for the tree removal, and we're also going to have representatives there to discuss the reforestation as well.
Thank you very much.
We'll pass that out.
That's 6:00 PM.
At Little Res, well.
No, not Little Res, Cobb Elementary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cobb Elementary School.
It's the first day that that school will be open, and so, you know, there's a symbolic nature to have it there as well, because that school is very critical to the survival of Cobb as well, as we've planned before. So we're having it there. It's a big enough area, but that's the first day that that school will be open, so we'll meet there at 6:00.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak regarding updates, reports? Yes?
I'd like to have the wrong time.
Well, now's the time.
We don't have ARBs on the agenda today.
She's here for 5.4, the temporary deferral. What's the topic?
I believe, I couldn't understand the language. Shall I wait then?
I don't know. Your topic is on?
Pleasure to the mic, please. Yeah, basically, I'm just, um, pleasure to the microphone.
Dana, here's you.
Okay. My name is Lily Carr, and I'm here because I really like to see people get into interim housing now. I know it's been taken while.
Let's, we'll take that up at 5.4. I wasn't sure what you were updating or reporting on.
Okay, yes, that's, thank you.
Okay. That's regarding recreational vehicles?
Yes, I've been through all the zones. I have numbers for you. I brought up.
Okay, we'll take that for 5.4. We're looking at outside of that, updates, cleanup, housing, those types of issues.
Michael Dunlap. I would ask that you gentlemen ask, where is the State Water Resources Control Board in terms of beginning the planning process of mitigating any runoff that's going to be expected?
I met with them at 11 o'clock today and got this report today.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Mike. Any other members of the public? Yeah, we're going to move on to our many items. This is 5.2. This is Consideration Reduction of Counter Hours. And Community Development Department, Rick? He's here for a while, so you can begin with this one.
Good afternoon. For the audience, Richard Coell, Community Development Director for the county. Yeah, our first item from Community Development is just a request to reduce the counter, the public counter hours. We're completely overwhelmed, both with some staffing shortages and increased call volume and demands on all of my staff related to recovery efforts. For instance, this week, we're trying to update the damage assessment report. There's numerous concerns in that report, and we need to update that data in order for multiple county agencies to have the proper information to go by for the recovery cleanup efforts. We're currently down three, soon to be four positions in a department. Our call volume has been astronomically high this summer. We are averaging 2,400 inbound calls a month. Works out to about one call for every three and a half minutes during the nine-hour cycle that we were open since. Close the counter at lunch, but it's not enough. As much as I do not want to reduce public counter hours, we're already being hit with a number of planning applications, a couple of them fire-related. We need to be able to process those applications. I anticipate that we're going to need to fast-track a number of permits and variances related to the recovery efforts, and just having the, you know, adequate staff out to be able to go out and field duty inspections, follow up on projects. You know, there's still environmental issues we're dealing with and grading inspections, and now going into the rainy season to try to keep enough staff out, and planning staff for the erosion control measures for the portion of that that we address and work with public works on. So I'm asking for a temporary reduction, at least for a couple of months. There's some other agenda items ahead of this that will kind of segue with this request to some degree, such as the permit center, but we just don't have the staff. The process that we go through to hire new people is, you know, it's a somewhat onerous process. My best estimation is to get through that process and fill the vacancies that I currently face will be towards, you know, somewhere around the holidays by the time we have people in, you know, probably after the 1st of January. That's for two planning vacancies and doing inspection. I don't have a current eligibility list for two planning vacancies. Just that process alone will be at least four months for those two vacancies.
Supervisor Brown?
One thing that I had mentioned to you here a while back, and I think we, maybe the Board can have that discussion right now, is to reach out to the City of Lakeport and City of Clear Lake about temporary contracting with them for some of these. I don't mind, you know, reducing the hours to the public, because I know staff's still working and trying to get this stuff done, but I don't want to limit services available to the public, and, you know, maybe it can work, maybe it can't. I'm not sure, because as far as I know, we haven't actually had that conversation with them, but I think in the interim that they would be receptive to the idea of maybe contracting with.
My understanding is Clear Lake does not have a planner position, and Lakeport has a director and an associate planner, and that's it. It's a great idea if we have.
Let's, I think, I think it would be worth us exploring, maybe we could, you know, combine everybody's efforts and make a planning department out of all three, you know, if we had, just in the interim. So if it would help you, and, you know, I don't know what their, what their application workload is, you know, I don't know, I haven't spoken to them directly, but in the interim, I think it's, it'd be worthwhile to at least have that discussion.
Yeah, I understand City of Clear Lake doesn't have the resources. City of Lakeport may, and Mayor Schill or other representatives could be better suited to answer that, but that inquiry would have to be as to how it affects those other applicants that are within city limits. They're queued up, and if such a partnership would be a hardship for those other applicants that are already trying to build projects along with the city limits, so it's a dialogue that I'm hoping to discuss as well. It'd seem to me maybe contracting out, whatever we can, looking at valuing whatever resources that moves things along, this expedition is possibly the bottleneck effect of this, or you have any concerns about that when you're going to have all these calls, because they're not going to stop, and the service and the appearances of counters and the demand's still going to be there, so.
No, absolutely, we're concerned about that, but the volume is, just the phone calls is really high. And each of those phone calls requires some, you know, some information being bestered out and provided to that person over the phone, so.
And I know that our Board's not excited about automated phone trees. We've had that discussion, debate, but when you have such a volume and demand, it may be worthy for you to look at presenting for a Board to help at least provide some services in advance, move people through the system, and get your responses to them without over the burden, burdening our staff in processing applications. What's your?
I had the same thought Supervisor Brown knows, and I was thinking about other counties surrounding this. You know, this is the time of year that they start gearing down in most other counties because of, you know, the building season's pretty much over, but I think we ought to reach out to other counties around us and see if we can't get any help from, you know, the counties around us. And, you know, there's, I'm sure there's some retired inspectors and stuff around throughout the county also. I think what it is, reach out to what we have available. We've used retired folks before to fill in certain gaps, so, you know, I think we ought to reach out, maybe even through CSAT or something, to see if we can get some folks that are winding down, and maybe even, you know, some of those folks would be laid off in the summertime or in the wintertime because the work looks less. So I had the same thought, contract out with whatever it takes to get the, to get the job done. The other thing I noticed, Rick, I, you know, I know as much as you hate to close counter hours, but I think the way you have it set up where the morning time would be pretty much handle phone calls, let people know if you're going to call, call in the morning, and then come to the counters in the afternoon, or vice versa, whatever way you had it set up, I think that's the way you had it set up. So that way, because it's really tough to have somebody run between the phone and the counter back and forth when we're that short staff, and if they can just handle all the phone calls at that period of time, and then the afternoon, they handle all the counter stuff. So that will prep people in the morning if they need to come to the counter to come, you know, still coming that day. So, you know, we, I, we just need to make this work whichever way we can. I don't care what we have to, I don't care, you know, if we have to get a crew from out of state to come in and handle stuff, but of course, there was all the California codes, but whatever, whatever it takes to get this done, we just need to get it done.
Supervisor Schill?
I just note that we had a contract we were going to discuss under 5.5. How does that square with the conversation?
That's the stuff that's related to the fire.
But only the fire, so.
Yeah, that's.
But that's what he's talking about, so.
No, he's talking about, we're talking about just regular planning that's bad enough. I mean, on a good day, without the fire, we're still having a problem.
Yeah, okay, I get it.
And, and we're not going to get reimbursement for, for staff with this kind of stuff as well.
I thought I heard you say fire, so this really is.
Well, it's getting calls from everything right now until we get that, until we get that one approved.
It bleeds through the other items.
It's everything, and I've looked at in terms of building inspectors trying to bring in retired folks, and the challenge there is, is people when they retire, they tend not to keep their certifications up anymore, and those just expire after a year or two after you've retired, so they can't do the field work or the plan checking. So that's part of item 5.4. I've also considered the possibility of, you know, maybe we contract out with a planning firm to provide a couple of additional planners, but the reality with bringing in outside, out-of-area planners, whether they're consultant or other government jurisdictions, there's still a steep learning curve. You know, every planning agency tends to do things a little bit different. We have our own nuances in how we do things here versus how somebody does something in Oakland or Sonoma County. So if, you know, there's a loss of efficiency if we're just trying to bring people in for a couple of months to cover that scenario. We do have the position allocations available for, you know, to fill these two vacancies in planning. The longer-term issues can affect building and safety. And what I'm trying to do as well is keep my code enforcement staff as insulated as I can, because, you know, we're funding code enforcement differently, and that's through, you know, through additional one-time monies. I don't want to draw my code enforcement staff into the field work for updating the, you know, the damage assessments and all that, and all those things. We've already had to do that, unfortunately. I've already taken a month of work out of the program, out of code enforcement program, away from the program into the fire recovery of Rocky and Valley Fire, because we didn't have enough field staff to get out with, with the CAL OES folks that need assistance in initial surveys, and now I've got to do the same to get through this next week or so in updating the CAL FIRE damage assessment. So I'm really trying to, you know, I've got 18 positions, but three of them are code enforcement, I've got four other vacancies, and it just doesn't leave us much to work for at the time of need.
Supervisor Comstock?
We all, Pete, I don't know, I've got these phone systems that, that's run for whatever, two, three, four, and five, but at this point, implementing that, implementing that might take an enormous amount of time, a person to answer each phone call, correct it to the right, and some of the questions, I think we need to implement. I don't like it, but in the interest of the situation, I think we need to do that and not freeze up people, time to work. And then if they can't get that information there, of course, and then you'll get directly conversable. Might have been information that can be answered. How much time does it take to get that? Maybe IT has to answer that. I don't know what the question is to have to answer that question. How much time would it take to implement that? To be able to take some of that workload directly off.
Just an automated phone system?
Yes, I think you have an information on that call, too, so there's certain.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
And we do that.
Yes. Yes.
And we're referring people to our website, we've beefed up the website considerably in the last six months, there's a lot more information on there, we're trying to shift, you know, encourage folks, if we're too busy to take them at the counter on the phones to double check the website, they may be able to get their answer there now.
But do you have any idea if it's going to be automated to answer something?
No.
With a frequently asked, we all go through and you press frequently asked questions, or nine out of 10, it's there.
It's too variable in our business, and it just seems like every day we'll, we'll get a question thrown at us that's new and different.
It's not frequent.
There's always press zero, you can't get it anywhere else, and then you get the right question.
Well, the board does have interest in that, and Rick's support, if we could bring it back and work with that IT, just to see kind of a timeframe.
I mean, at this point, we're, we're not keeping up on the current planning applications that, you know, that the, the actual, you know, use permits and apps and things like that that are coming in. We're fairly managing to staff the counter and deal with the field work, and it's going to play into this permit center that I think we definitely need to establish in Middletown as well, I guess, next time.
Supervisor Brown? I guess Supervisor Smith? Well, you know, none of us like the idea of not having a live person to answer the phone, but, you know, this, this is certainly different than normal. But the courts, you know, what Jeff said, you know, about having, you know, conditioning the public to when to call, when to come in, the courts on the fourth floor have done that, and so everybody knows that you, if you deal with the court very much, you know that you can call between eight and one, and that's it. They're still there all day, but that's it, you either come in or you call, and the rest of the day, they're taking care of other things that they need to take care of. And, you know, it's kind of a, kind of annoying at first, but we're all used to it, to deal with the fourth floor, so, you know, we can probably try something like that. And it's got a small phone tree where, you know, civil will call this number, criminal will put this number, but mainly it's just closed to the public, the phone calls at one o'clock, so maybe we can try something like that. Supervisor Smith?
Rick, is there a way to, you know, for outside people to be able to come in and do certain things that would just be real specific? Because the other thing is too, once you get an inspector insured something on a project, it's hard to break that continuity and have, you know, one inspector do part of the inspection, have another inspector come back and finish it up. So maybe there's specific things we can, you know, like maybe the site inspection and stuff like that to get them, you know, all done, ready to go, have a particular person maybe from the outside that will do that part of it. I don't know, I'm just trying to throw things out there to see what we can do. And the other thing is, how about overtime with our own department? In other words, would people jump at the chance to work a few hours overtime, probably at the same cost as it would cost us to contract out with somebody? So, I mean, that's another idea, to see if employees would like to work, you know, an extra two, you know, two hours a day or something while we're going through this for the, for the overtime and the extra pay. So, I mean, that's another thought, and I know that's part of our cringing like crazy, but we've got to get this done, so I think at this point, it's whatever it takes to get it done.
Already had a lot of overtime hours with my staff and comp time during the, with the last six weeks, just we were spread out in three different locations, the field work was, was staff's an honorable, yeah, we're pretty, staff's pretty maxed out, they're getting burnt out, and that's the other part of this, is trying to rotate people out so they can get a few days off and still keep things flowing, it's a challenge.
And the other thing though, I hesitate to say this, but it's something we've held off on for a long, long time given the economy is, we're not structurally balanced with certain aspects in your department, and it's inevitable, especially now with demands and our cost obligations that the state and the fed are not going to cover that, there may happen to be a serious discussion about certain fee adjustments, there's no way around it, and I hate to even talk about that, but that's the reality of what we're confronted with. We've held the line on our fees for, since I've been on the board, very nominal increases. I think Supervisor Brown would agree as well.
We're, we're actually working on having that discussion now to bring back a recommendation to the board for first of the year, before the fire. Well, I just, you know, we'd beat this up, I think we should just give direction to staff, go ahead and do whatever they got to do to make it work and, you know, try to kind of monitor the situation, and if it's, if it's not working, try something else, if it's working, then, you know, I don't think we're going to sit here and solve your problem for you, I think you got to figure it out, so. Supervisor Comstock?
We're not going to make all the right decisions, but let's make one of us, and I'll come back and make another one. Go ahead, move forward with it, if it doesn't work, come back and make it work.
Right, I can adjust back, you know, increase the public counter hours on my own and not have to come back to the board, I just need some authority to be cut in the back as, as far as we have to for the time being, and as things start to settle down. And another option, right, you know, is it possible to move us up in the queue with HR for, for the planner vacancies? I don't know what the queue is actively.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that because I'm sure the sheriff's office has the same, yeah.
Probably all do.
I, I trust that HR is identifying priorities for, for where we have, in fact, they could probably use a few staff members themselves.
Yeah, for.
Okay, let's, citizens input on this item, we're going to keep it confined to a consideration of reduction of hours at community development. So that's the scope of input on this item. Please take your first and last name.
John Moss, I have an idea that has been brought forward this, this afternoon, and that is to have a sign-in sheet. At least the person that can come to the counter, he'll put his name, his phone number, and his contact.
They have that.
You already have it? Because I know that when I go to the deputies, and they're not always glad to see me, but they sure do respond very quickly, within 24 hours, they're out on a call. And Lake County Jail, if you wait a long time, you can talk to a real person. And that way, Rick Coell would have a record of how many county, county people paying in one day. I've never seen it. I go up there, I never sign in, I don't ever get to say what I'm there for, so I'm glad he has it, next time I'll look for it, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else regarding the board's consideration of reduction of community development hours? Do you have somebody for you?
My name is Vern Garrison, my experience was Hurricane Aniki, 22,500 homes lost. With FEMA funding for emergencies, they set up emergency permit centers, they were like bookmobiles. You had your plans reviewed, if you had your engineering and your designs compliant with the code, your permit was issued in two hours. I know it.
And we're probably following into that on 5.3, even though it's going to be.
We're talking about the staffing available for processing.
Yeah, so keep it about public availability with community development. Reducing those hours, yeah.
Same idea, I'm going to tell you again, thank you.
All right, thank you. In the scope of reduced hours to the public, any other input? The demands, okay, bring back to the board, so request this for motion approval was presented. We have a motion, and a second, Supervisor Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five votes. Next, let's move to 5.3, this is a request to support and establish temporary permit center in Middletown in order to assist the victims of Valley Fire. Rick?
Thank you. We've identified a, a small room within the senior center portion of the library senior center facility, it's roughly a 300, 350 square foot room called the crime room, we think we can make that work for a permit center. I've already spoken with, with Shane French and IT, and he said it would be pretty simple to get us network so that we can access the county, in our case, our E-drive, and all the information we would need with a computer in there operating our permits plus system. So it, it seems like a real logical place for us to open a permit center, but I need, you know, consensus of the board to proceed because there are some steps in that process, and I think we do need to have some sort of a conversation with the senior center at the, the staff, what will probably, Matt and I, because the room that we're interested in does generate revenue for the senior center, it's their secondhand store, first store location, how it generates revenue for. But we know we're going to be busy, we're, we're already getting applications for permits for homes that were lost, and we think we'll get a, you know, probably a couple dozen of them here in the next month, and then the, the real work's going to begin, on the building side, the real work's going to begin in spring, but there's also a lot of planning matters we're having to address with, with setback issues, a lot of non-conforming properties that, where homes were lost, and there's going to be some challenges there, so it'd be nice to get that permit center open this winter so we at least have a, perhaps a community development technician there to answer general questions and just assist at the local level.
Supervisor? Well, you know, this, this is, you know, something we've been working on with Senator McGuire with his help, you know, getting the funding for that, it's been very helpful. You know, we need to do it, I think it's a good idea, but we also need to, to make sure that, you know, it says here, permit center in Middletown in order to assist victims of Valley Fire, which is, which is broad, those victims are people who have lost their homes, there's going to be, there are also people that are coming forward now that, you know, in that burn area that are, you know, seeing an opportunity for subdivisions and that kind of thing, those aren't going to be dealt with there. It's only people who have had, that have lost their homes that want to rebuild homes that were lost, it's not going to be vacant lots and people that are now are going to see an opportunity to get a quick, easy permit, so we just need to make sure that's clear. I understand that.
Yeah, I agree 100%, I'd like to clarify that, it would definitely just need to be related to the issues directly caused by the fire.
Right, so for processing, it would be either stated by declaration or application that they've been, been suffered the loss due to the fire, and that this is not a vacant lot that was pre-existing, yet they're building.
Although, what I would like to do is, because there are some lots that, you know, Anderson Springs comes to mind, there's, there are others, you know, Gifford Springs, some of the areas where there are, on a creek or, you know, you've been there for 100 years, there's going to be some challenges, like you said, as far as lot size, so when those come up, I would like to, you know, somehow or another, maybe Jim and I could work with you to try to find some kind of an alternative, maybe we need to combine some lots, maybe the person next door has a vacant lot, but they're not going to build one, we could figure something out to make, make one lot out of two, to try to, you know, I don't want to tell somebody you can't, your, your lot is no longer, you know, of any value, you know, so we got to find some kind of a, an alternative, even if it's a trade for another lot somewhere, I mean, we got to find some kind of an alternative, or without, without making, making an exception that, you know, challenges the environment or doesn't allow for, you know, just stay law, just flat doesn't allow.
Or how do we accommodate that person or a family that suffered loss that doesn't want to rebuild, or they suffered the loss, but they have maybe either another land holding that vacant or have interest in purchasing and taking any insurance proceeds or capital to build that new site, they've still would be victims of the fire?
I think that would be appropriate, it could be appropriate, you got a criteria.
And for funding reasons, we need to limit this, when we're looking at giving disaster recovery funds for a number of these functions, we really have to hold the line there, it's got to be disaster related. And I don't want to, to replace the functions that we perform in Lakeport, I mean, when we start getting into.
Well, we actually have, actually what Tony brings up is a good point, because we don't want to create a situation where the state says, well, we can't reimburse you for that because they're building a house somewhere else in the county, so we need to check on that first before, and we may be well intended, but then.
So why is there a comp staff?
I've already had some communication brought to me about wanting to work with that larger, 350 units, I think we may have been looking to expedite just like this, that's just not going to happen now. Those are inappropriate, and, you know, we, actual victims, not the.
And, and having a permit center there will segue in with any contracting that we might do for outside inspectors, because it's going to give them a location to park a store now. The, the other piece of this is, is the health department is, you know, we're going to need to have an environmental health technician there as well to, you know, for, for at least certain business hours, and Jim and I, Jim Brown and I have spoken about this, he supports this, we know there's, there's a number of constrained and substandard systems and another, you know, number of problems associated with septic as well, so we're trying to create a little micro one-stop shop, and maybe, you know, we're probably not going to do the plant checking there, but we're going to have people there that can answer technical questions and help get the package of information complete so that when we send it to Lakeport or send it to an outside consultant, it is complete so that we can fast track and expedite the, the permit, the plan reviews, and try to get quick planning solutions to a number of, of the various related challenges that we're going to have.
One of the things that we're, we are doing is for, so the board's aware, right now, if somebody wants to rebuild, they've got to take plans for a sprinkler system in the fire department, have that plan checked and have it reviewed, approved by the fire department, but we're actually going to start working with the fire department to do those plan checks internally and save that burden away from the fire department, they're, they're glad to let it, let it happen.
Also, the 429, the fire safer, give inspections as well.
Just Supervisor Brown, and Rick, has there been further dialogue about the idea and the concept of the collection system in construction development for Anderson Springs, and how you balance a person that suffered loss that would like to build now and move forward with construction and septic versus that of.
Actually, you met with Mark and conception, first, first has to be voted on, they still have to vote it, you can't just do it, and so that one's a little bit closer to being ready to have a vote on it, and we're just working on funding the state on that, but the other thing is, you know, on COF2, we talked about, you know, creating a system to where if somebody does make that investment for their septic system, they're not going to be required to hook up to it now, but there will be a time.
To attend to them, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't want to, you know, spend $30,000 for a septic system and then, and then force them to.
That's the concern.
Into the sewer, but we, you know, sewer is an ideal way to go, but we need to get buy-in from the community too, so that, you know, we have to do it in a fashion of analyzing.
Okay, any member of the public wish to speak on this item within the scope of establishing a temporary permit center to only assist those victims of Valley Fire?
Quick question, Sandy Tucker, I'm actually here for the Board of Realtors, for the Legislative Committee, and I had a question about, you said you were going to double check on whether or not they rebuilt on a lot that's not the same one that their house burned. Is there a way to get that information to us once you do decide it? Because a lot of these things, people are actually already in the process of doing this, I have several clients, and if we can get maybe Scott Nickmeyer on the, the list for that, maybe the Realtors can be answering more questions and keep them from calling and planning about every single thing.
At least as I understand the dialogue and discussion we had today, when I suggest that it's dependent hinges upon whether we're going to get copper reimbursement and coverage from the state.
Correct, so.
Any of those services.
We can get that information, go through Matt and Kathleen Sator.
We can send a weekly permit list to, to anybody who requests it.
So when we determine, for Sandy's purposes, maybe Scott can come on contact, either me or Rob or Rick Coell directly, maybe at the end of the next couple of days to find out.
Because the more information that comes to us, I could just, for a week, is that. All right, thank you.
Any other member of the public that would like to speak within the scope of establishing a temporary permit center in Middletown at the library? See, now I'll bring it back to the board for motion approval, to approve the motion. In the segments, Supervisor Comstock, if you all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five votes. Let's take it at 5.4, this is discussion consideration of an urgency interim ordinance authorizing a temporary deferral of certain provisions of section 21 dash 27, point 3 subdivision 2. Rick?
Okay, this was before your board last week, since refined it a little bit to address the concern with lot size, trying to bring the lot size down to 40,000 square feet, and also added provision, sorry, uh, attachments. Number two, on page two, each property owner seeking to install an RV or attain a FEMA certified manufacturer home for installation on their property pursuant to this ordinance shall first sign a statement acknowledging that they will begin construction of their replacement home under approval of the County of Lake Building Permit within the next year. And then your board can always extend this, this interim ordinance, if we're seeing a pattern or things are taking longer for people to start up the permit process, you know, start the reconstruction process. But this ordinance is intended to be somewhat of a relief valve, as I mentioned last week, our, our local code does not allow us to issue a temporary willing permit until a building permit is in hand, and I'm asking your board to relieve that for the properties that are 40,000 square feet or larger, where we have more room, where it's a lot safer for folks to go back in now, not at Christmas. in now, not at Christmas after the cleanups are all completed, but now. Because they have other issues, a lot more issues in many cases, such as outbuildings that were destroyed, wells that need to be repaired, bringing their farm animals back, their horses back, repairing corrals and barns and all of that. And they've got a lot more trees to remove in most cases than the typical residential lot. So getting them on the property where they can start that, their own cleanup efforts, things that Cal OES is not going to be able to cover for them, then I think we should try to give them a head start on that. And also, it's going to reduce the chance, the possibility of looting on these more rural properties. So those are the main reasons for it. The smaller lots, we still have a lot of concerns with those. The cleanups have only just started. We're really concerned about putting FEMA trailers and RVs on these small city-sized lots. There's just not enough room in most cases to set the trailer in and still be able to construct the home and not impact your ability to reconstruct your home or impact the neighbor's ability to clean up, you know, with the trees and the debris and all these things going on. So I'm asking your board to adopt this interim ordinance. It will, you can always come back and adjust it. If we need to adjust it or change the lot size later, we can certainly entertain that. Want to get us a starting point so we have a consistent answer for the folks that can go in now on these larger parcels and at least have a mechanism for it. And that mechanism is a, basically it starts with the review of the site, looking at a new temporary power pole and getting their electricity back on the property, doing a quick safety inspection of the area where the RV or trailer would be proposed to be
And I remember that when we discussed this, the debate centered around the size of looking at the acre of 43,560 feet or greater. And there was discussion and concerns about not allowing building parcels smaller. And then we looked at, and I think Wes still also raised, you know, some of the criteria, and possibly Wes or Comstock, the criteria we had met. So it seems like we're all on the same page for what's being presented, but I'm assuming there's going to be discussion about threshold question. And I am having a hard time with this and I understand and respect where you are and staff's coming from with this and the reasons therefore, but at the same time, the key is the temporary, right? We know that people come in that they're temporary, they construct within a year, whether it's FEMA or RV or a trailer of some sort, and how we police that and implement that and control that given those already existing, pre-existing demands in our community. There's got to be a balance because there might be lots that fairness and equity that could be safely inhabited during construction too. And I just want to see what other the board members feel about that. So Wes or Comstock?
Well, we'll get into that in a moment. One thing in page two, paragraph one, I think we need to address, exists where a permitted residence has been destroyed. Some of them have been there. I need to say how permitted and or on tax rules because some...
Yeah, for example, my house was never permitted. Built before, permit was invented.
So that needs to be, that needs to be added into it?
Pre-existing or on tax rolls?
Right, right.
Well, tax roll, it can be on tax roll and be built 10 years ago without permits.
I didn't...
It's legal not conforming or permitted.
And there's a big difference between needing a permit and being permitted, meaning it was permitted, it just didn't have a...
Yeah, it was permitted. Nobody required it.
It has been permitted. It's not an illegal residence.
Yes. And in the 40,000 square foot or larger, and I understand that, is there a possible way to have this, that it's within 100 feet of any problem area, either on your own property or your neighbor's? And then that takes away the need of being a maker. Does that work? Get that out for everybody's...
Like a setback?
Yeah, setbacks of 100 feet, not just from your own, but also has to be from your neighbor where you might be impacting his ability to do anything or your ability to exist safely.
Do you have any reaction to Wes or Comstock's?
I have a question about what, what do you mean if there's not a problem with it?
Well, if it's, you could have one that's 40,000 square feet and it's still a problem, still an acre. So I understand the acre or the 40,000 square foot, but how do we police that and how, if we could police that, could we do the 100 feet in any direction from the ability to place it and be safe in construction?
Your suggestions, is it analogous with our cultivation ordinance from structures where we had certain...
Setbacks, setbacks.
Current to the house.
I'm putting it out there to see if it works.
100 feet from the nearest burned structure or 100 feet from the nearest placement of temporary dwelling? Looking at from burned structure or property line?
Burned structure. Because that doesn't just, that just doesn't encompass your own.
Part of this is also, you know, with our staffing, I'd like to say, trying to manage something reasonable here. One thought with the acreage is it's really clear to everybody, you know? And I know that sounds harsh, but right now we just need to start dealing with the rural properties because they do have the room right now to meet these safety requirements.
So that'd be...
Is it possible, I know we kind of approached this last time, to have this kind of threshold of 40,000, but there be an appeal process where if somebody has a hardship or request, they can appeal and bring it before the board?
We don't want to have to process that unfortunately. It just bothers them that much more. I think whatever you decide, it should be really clearly delineated.
It almost has to be cookie cutter delineate, right?
Yeah, it just, the more discretion, the more pressure on staff, the more...
Everybody will appeal.
Everybody will appeal.
I get it, yeah.
I like your ideas, the realities are different.
Wes or Comstock, then I'll get Smith and Brown. I mean, Steel, sorry.
Which one?
Steel? The one and only.
The only one and only, okay. There's no Smith. Well, I had some language, I would see for mine. I wrote it, "The temporary placement of the unit shall be no closer than 100 feet to the new construction or the debris from the old home of any lot or neighboring lot." And then basically you have a setback all the way around, remove the square footage. Because the issue that was brought up before was that there was a danger from the debris, the cleanup, the trees, all the rest of it. So why not just have a setback from that of any lot, including the one that you sit on? I went, and I just want to make a point. This business of 40,000 square feet is very close to an acre. I went down to my neighbor who has a fenced yard, a couple adjoining lots, and just slightly under an acre, which comes very close to 40,000 square feet. And that's a lot of room. It could be 20,000 square feet, be much more reasonable, seem like a threshold. I don't know why 40. I was waiting for that explanation. But 20 seems to make sense if you're going to do it on square footage, just based on what I've seen. And then if you're going to do it on basis of setback, then it should be a setback from whatever the problem is, which is the old debris, the new building of any lot, which puts you in a place where either you can do it or you can't. So you either move out there or you don't. You get your own tape measure for that one.
Wes or Smith?
Well, you know, when you supervise the Comstock, we're talking about 100 foot setback. Well, on a 200 by 200 lot, there's, you can't do it. That's 40,000 square feet, 200 by 200. So, you know, 100 foot setback, it works or doesn't? I mean, that's true. It either works or doesn't. But you could have somebody that's 50 foot inside their lot and that leaves you, you know, 100 by 100 spot right in the very middle of your 40,000 square foot lot. So...
Your house happens to be in there and you're supposed to be 100 feet from that debris till it's cleaned up, but it's not going to work.
Yeah, and I mean, then also if there's 5 foot setback in the property line and the person inside of you, you can't do it, even with 100 foot setback. So I, I think we really need to lean toward trying what Rick has and see how much pushback we get from it because we've got to start somewhere. And let's get this, you know, let's get this thing rolling and we can always adjust it again, but let's get it, let's get it rolling.
I agree. I think, you know, let's go with what Rick has. And like Jim said earlier on something else, it's never going to be perfect, but at least this is a good start. And I don't think it's going to be that much of an issue because there, it looks to me like the contractors are cleaning the whole area at one time. They're not cleaning one lot, they're moving off to another part of town. So they're going to, they're going to clean several lots in the same area. So I don't think it's an issue where this lot's going to be cleaned and the next day they're going to start building a house there, so.
The other thing, the instant somebody obtains their building permit, we can issue a temporary dwelling permit for the, whatever it is, FEMA trailer, RV to go back on the property while, so they can live there and build or participate in building or monitor the contractor building their house.
Existing zone.
Once the, per existing code. And that, I would encourage people to do that because then they can move out of the temporary RV parks that will be set up and will start drawing people out there and they can monitor their house construction. They're going to be right on site because at least everything's clean, you know, provided they have the space to do it. At that point, you can squeeze in at least an RV and live there where we would already allow that. But the key is have the building permit. We know that you're going to rebuild. This isn't going to be a three-year-long or permanent RV or FEMA trailer occupancy that we're now going to have to go through unfortunate code enforcement efforts down the road. We don't want to do that either.
Yeah, and that's...
Last thing we want to do to these victims.
And that's where we need, I think, and I have a perspective, I think we're on, hopefully on the same page, to usher them, to give them incentive to get that permit pulled so they can get back on its cleanup and to actually build and comply. We don't want to be in the situation where we're kicking victims off the property that aren't complying. That's just, they've suffered a lot of loss and it's hard for us and I know that we confirm that. So we want to set them up for success, not failure.
What concerns me with the small lots is prematurely installing, say FEMA trailers that then impede the ability to rebuild. So you have to remove the FEMA trailer to start the reconstruction of the house because the lot's too small. And now we're just kicking the can down the road, saying, "Well, now you got to move it now."
Wes or Steel?
With all that logic on the table, I still have trouble with 40,000 square feet. 20 would work for everything that I've heard. It just seemed too big. I just want to put that out there. But I'm 100% behind whatever the board recommends. I just want to point out that with the logic on what you stated, 20's just as good. And if you took the 100 and reduced it to 50, have you made it so that you can't do anything? I mean, really, last time you were talking about 30 feet. 100 just kind of came up, but why not 50? Why not the 30? So I'm just trying to make sure that all the arguments are lined up here.
Wes or Comstock?
At this point, what I would say is we should go with what's presented because we know that we're one week away from ending anything that we can.
Yeah, sure.
And if we don't get started, we'll be late, we'll be arguing about this until we're not doing it. So I think we should move forward and when we find the problems, which we probably will, we'll be back here to them in a minute. Like I said, make a decision. We'll be paralyzed, but from wrong, we'll make another one.
Wes or Smith?
Just, you know, one of the thought, we discussed this last time too, is, you know, maybe as we get a little further down the road, as lots get, are starting to get cleaned up in one area completely, if your lot and every adjoining lot to yours is cleaned up, then you can come in and get a, you know, get started on something or maybe get a variance or something. But it's just something to keep in the back of our mind to think of later that, because that's our biggest concern, is putting someone in a lot that's not cleaned up or the neighbor that cleaned up. But once all that's done and every adjoining lot is cleaned up around yours, including yours, then that qualifies as some other way to put something on it.
Can I have some other ideas that we can talk about later if it becomes an issue? You know, rolling back when we actually issue the temporary dwelling permit, you might be able to look at amending the ordinance to do that at the time the plan check is done. So for instance, if people have got everything cleaned up and they can't start construction until spring, but we've got an approved site plan, an approved set of plans, ready to go, on the shelf, you know, so we know everything fits, an approved site plan shows the house location, shows where the temporary dwelling goes. I mean, there's different things we can do. It can be amended. And if there's a problem, I'm going to bring it back to you and I trust that, you know, any of your board members, any of you that perceive problems, whether you do the same and just, we can adjust this. But I need to start somewhere and I think this is a safe place to start.
Let's open up to the public. Any member of the public that would like to speak on this? To do so, we're going to keep it within the scope, once again, of these temporary deferrals to allow FEMA trailer, manufactured home and/or our personal RV system with this ordinance threshold is 40,000 or greater to do so. Please, when you provide comments, know that there's existing, which we alluded to, zoning that would allow, once cleanup has taken place and permit has been pulled for purposes of construction, that a smaller parcels would allow occupancy of RVs or trailers during the time of construction. So it's important that you all keep that in your mind, that you're not excluding actually smaller lots from actually inhabiting those smaller lots. And I think it's important for the public to understand that there's still some mechanism that allows that, but there's got to be certain criteria that's met. Ms. Moss, please state your first, last name for the record. You have three minutes.
Joan Moss. I understand that, that once the lots are cleaned, the smaller lots can have temporary trailers.
They pull the permit and begin construction, yes?
Well, what I want to mention is, I heard mention, and I haven't seen it in its entirety, I'd like to make sure that we in Lake County are not making up our own laws, that we are in line with the governor's executive order about releasing all the former strict rules. And I have seen completely old trailers with self-contained water and sewer and electricity removed from private property. And I didn't like it then and I still don't like it now. So I want to make sure that we all have a copy of it. The second thing I want to mention is that the people who are back in their homes on Cod Mountain, many of them don't have phones, many of them don't have internet, and there needs to be a way that they find out what we're doing here. Thank you. They don't have television yet. The cable was burnt. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next please.
Again, my name is Kimberly Carr. And I am really concerned about the planning department and the burden that they're going to be faced with. And I think it would take some pressure off if we were able to use intact lots for people to place RVs within their village with their friends and it would not affect the debris and cleanup process. I would like to respectfully request that we consider for a minimum of at least six months of the ability to place RVs or trailers on intact lots. And I brought these maps today. I have been into these zones. I have talked to people that have lived in their neighborhoods 30, 40 years, walked their neighborhoods. I actually have neighborhood counts of number of structures affected. And based on my observations, there really isn't a cookie cutter solution. For example, Zone 5 is very heavily impacted. They are going to need FEMA trailers. I don't know if they've identified a lot, but even when they're cleared, I don't see them going back in. We've also got issues on top of Cod Mountain where Hoberg's was. You know, they're talking about using that, but they can only get maybe 50 or 100 RVs there. So, and you know, there's going to be clearing problems there. They're tight lots. I hope you all have received the paper that I offered you today with the research provided. Based on what I saw, about 600 of these 1,200 structures probably do need some sort of arrangements for FEMA housing. But it seems to me that, for example, in Zones 2B, 3B, and 7B, there's some very self-reliant people in there and people that are connected to each other within their communities. And I think over the short term, they really can't help each other out and take the burden off the planning department. I really, really, really feel very passionately about this because I've lost my own home to a fire. I know what these people are battling through and they really need housing of any form so that they can rest their nervous system, that they can develop a routine, a new normal in their lives and begin to figure out how the heck they're going to recover from this really horrific event. I have had emergency workers coming in here asking me for the RVs that we have available. We have about three dozen to give away to those most in need. I don't know exactly how that's going to work in collaboration with FEMA. I just want to help people. So however this happens, please give them six months on their neighbor's lots to get their lives reestablished now, to keep their... lots to get their lives reestablished now, to keep their kids in school, to find work here in the local community, so that the community can continue to thrive and not be depopulated because there is no housing for these people. There's waiting lists in the parks now. There's just no housing. So I can speak specifically about any one of these zones. But in respect of your time, I'll let you ask the questions with regards to that. But I do have a lot of knowledge that can help. And respectfully request that the relief workers commute from Teluskoga and clearly and allow the residents to be as close as they can to their original neighborhood.
Your three minutes is up. Is there any questions of Ms. Carr? Any board members have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Carr. Appreciate it. Mr. Scott, you're next. Just state your first and last name and your after your minutes.
Gregory Scott, Scott County Road. And Mr. Chairman and board members, one of the things I use in the disasters that I've found that helped me was emergency ordinances. If you still have a declared disaster going on, you're allowed to do this. You can check that out with your office, your office of emergency services in the county council. But the emergency ordinance helps you expedite by writing up a this type of an ordinance from your county departments that have a specific need on housing and different things to put in place. And then they can be dismissed when no longer needed. This might ease your job, you know, for the people that have losses there, to expedite things. And you may not have to leave because you can pass these emergency ordinance that come in handy. And I just thought it might be a tool for you to consider, the emergency ordinance. Because you put timetables on there, it gives your staff a tool to write up an ordinance to present to you, and they're easily able to follow. And then you dismiss it. When the declaration is over with, and the ordinances are over with, are the timing to use. It's a tool that might help you.
Can I respond?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's.
Any of the member of the public, you have three minutes to speak on the side. Just state your first and last name, correct.
My name is Rod Stanbach. I would just like to bring up a little bit different angle on this topic. I think one of the things that the board supervisor should really keep in mind is the fact that doing anything possible to get residents back in their homes and their lots, at least feeling like they're back in their lots, is critically important because if that is not afforded, that the consumer, they're going to leave. There's a lot of folks that are going to leave. And I want to bring up the economic impact. When you study the impact of folks leaving your community, every dollar they earn and spend in your community turns over seven times. So anything you can do, thinking outside the box like the previous lady just mentioned, is a very positive thing. I think it's so important to do everything you can to get, and to let people back, even on the smaller lots temporarily as they try to rebuild, is a good thing. Because if they choose to leave, the economic impact to Lake County is going to be worse than the economic impact of the fire.
And that's, and I don't think there's any disagreement. That's why I'm going to reiterate what my opening remarks were. There's still a pathway for those smaller parcels, those individuals to have that proper cleanup, pull the permit, and be present. And we're very cognizant of what our desires are to spur economic development. That's the only thing that's still aligning this whole catastrophic event.
Right.
And the greater economic development and bringing stick-built homes than pre-bath homes, which is, I think, the homes type home that you sell your business off. Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Donald?
I just want to remind you, gentlemen, that 40,000 square feet is not this way. It's surveyed. And a lot of the lots on that mountain are like this. And there's only a very small area that, that something could be located and a house could be rebuilt. And some of these houses will not, the one, if we're lucky, the majority will get rebuilt. But some won't be rebuilt in the same spot on the land. And some are going to require a different kind of septic system. So the septic may be different where the trailer or residence gets located. You may have to go to engineered systems because when a lot of these were put in, there was no perp test done, you know, so.
Well, you're, that's, that's a very good point. A lot of these septic systems back in the 70s and 80s were done with the deeper leash fields.
40s and 50s, yeah.
Yeah, so, so yeah, there's a lot to consider about those expansion fields.
And, you know, I just want to echo, you know, I'd hate to see us do anything to impede anybody wanting to rebuild. Nobody's going to come up 100% in a new house here without money out of pocket. So everything we can do to encourage them to do that.
Anyone else before we act on the side? Go ahead, close the public. We're going to take this as an emergency order, entertain the ordinance, waive the, entertain the waiving of the title ordinance. Have a read the title.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the ordinance.
We have a motion in the second hall, favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Matt, please read the title.
An urgency interim ordinance authorizing a temporary deferral of certain provisions of Section 21, 27.3 subdivision B.
Entertain the operating of ordinance.
Off the order.
Ordinance has been offered. Matt, please call the roll.
Reddick, Comstock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Okay, let's take up your last item, Rick. This is 5.5, consideration of staff recommendation to, A, waive the county consult selection process, and B, approve agreement between the county of Lake and Coastland Civil Engineering Incorporated for additional building inspection and plan review services can be resolved for the valley fire.
Thank you. I am seeking to enter into an agreement with Coastland Engineering out of Santa Rosa for backup services for both plan review and additional building inspection support. This agreement is designed to flow with our needs. It will be on a daily basis. And, you know, we know by the evening or the late afternoon before how many inspections we have scheduled for the next day. We know what our resource, our inspector resource needs will be. A key to this is going to be to get the permit center open in the South County so there's a hub to work out of. Coastland is uniquely positioned in that they have adequate staff to help us. They're very well-trained. They check the references and then talk to some colleagues about the quality of their work. They're really good for nothing but good things about them. But also because they're just over in Santa Rosa, their staff can commute here at need for, for the inspection services so that we don't create additional housing issues. There's just, there's not going to be any place for us to, you know, I'm concerned about trying to hire people in the positions I have, let alone ask for additional temporary positions because there's just not going to be any housing, at least in the South County, if it's available. So for a whole host of reasons that I've spelled out in the memo, I'm asking for your approval to waive the hiring, the normal process for selection of consultants. These guys come highly recommended. And in terms of managing this, I intend that our plan, you know, plans examinations, you know, the construction plans will be sent to them so that they won't, we won't be paying for their staff time to drive here to do a plan review in, in our office in Middletown. However, we will need to have staff available for technical assistance from time to time. And I'm still working out those details. So we may need to have them come up once, one or two days a week to assist with technical questions on, on reconstruction. You know, the building codes are pretty complicated in California and folks have tended, you know, have questions, you know, throughout the process. So we need to accommodate that as well. So with that, just try to answer any questions you may have. We have looked at their, you know, their hourly rates are consistent for, for the private sector. And when you compare their hourly rates to what other Bay Area jurisdictions charge, and you look at their staff's hourly rates, they're not unreasonable with this for, and that's just the cost of doing business. And I got sticker shock when I saw those rates, but that's, you know, we don't have the option to hire additional staff. Even if we did, that's, you know, as I mentioned earlier, that would take a good four months. And trying to hire people for a one-year or two-year temporary job is very difficult when you have the cost of relocation and are comparatively low rates compared to most of the Bay Area for salaries here.
So is there Comstock?
In a previous position, we used to plan and are, and it's a good choice.
Any member of the public would like to speak on this item, which is confined to waiving the county consultant selection process and B, approving the proposed agreement between the county of Lake and Coastland Civil Engineering. I want to speak on this item before we proceed. Now, I'll bring it back to the board for first motion of waiving the county consultant selection process.
Mr. Chair, I move to move the consultant selection process.
Motion, in the second hall, favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Matt?
Chair, I move to approve the agreement. Officer Chair, sign.
You have a motion, second hall, favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Before we move on to the next item, before we go, Rick, I want to revisit 5.4. Just want to see what county council suggests. I want to make sure that that suggested amendment reflects upon us taking action, which the request supervisor, Comstock, and the board, was Page 2 of the urgency ordinance where O.S. 1 states that it's on property 40,000 square feet or larger where a permitted residence and/or legal non-conforming residence has been destroyed. So we may want to redo that, incorporate that amendment, and also there's a typo on the front page that, on the title says a urgency, ordinance should be urgency. So let's go ahead and revisit that, take that up with those incorporated changes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we incorporate the ordinance changes.
Okay, let's begin with that said incorporated changes with the waiving of, reading of the ordinance again with those changes. Have a read the title. Excellent. Okay, let's move on. It's for the Comstock, second by Smith, hall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0.
An urgency interim ordinance authorizing a temporary deferral of certain provisions of Section 21, 27.3 subdivision B.
Consider offering the ordinance with those added changes.
Off the order.
With those changes. Matt, please call the roll.
Supervisor Comstock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's take up 5.6. This is consideration of staff recommendation upon Social Services Director Carol Hutchinson as recovery coordinator. Carol's present today. You know, she's not supposed to be a good time to take this up. We know by processing her, she's not present, she's appointed to things. You notice every other department head here? Especially animal control. Matt, will you jump in?
Sure. Well, Carol is actually taking some much needed rest. She's been working as the director of the Emergency Operations Center for several days without any break. And so she took some time off. As we move into the recovery phase now, we've been advised from FEMA and CalOES that often communities appoint a recovery coordinator, meaning to act as the county's primary point of contact with their counterparts in FEMA and CalOES. And Carol, I think, is a natural appointment due to her relationships that she's built with those agencies, her relationships that she's built with the, with the departments in coordinating the recovery efforts. In fact, she's had a series of meetings and conference calls with, with the departments involved in the recovery effort. She's a very capable manager and she's able to delegate much of her day-to-day functions with Social Services to her capable deputy directors as a fully staffed, one of probably few departments that's fully staffed in terms of management personnel. So I recommend that the board would appoint her. I think it's important to appoint to come from the board so the departments know that she has the board's support. And so the board also knows that her responsibilities will be diverted away from running social services on a day-to-day basis.
Any questions or comments from any state member? Any public citizen, any input regarding this item is confined to the appointment of Social Services Director Carol Hutchinson to recovery coordinator. Public input. So you now bring it back to the board for action.
If you do, is that again?
Second, we have a motion, and a second by Mr. Still, hall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, let's take up 5.
Jennifer Bogdan.
5.7, this is discussion, consideration of a letter of support requesting at least 50% of workforce for master cleanup of wildland fires, the local labor operators and truckers. This is brought to you by Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown?
Since I asked that this be put on the agenda, there's been a lot of work done on the, on behalf of this figure issued by Cal recycle and Civic States, their contractor. And it kind of got off to a little bit of a slow start, but I think we're headed in the right direction. I think it's still a good idea to have this letter in place. But, you know, while I haven't gotten the numbers directly, I know I was at the training, Mike Dunlap was there teaching, and I was down there one day and there was really good representation of local employees, potential employees down there to be hired. And over the weekend, a lot of negotiations have taken place with, you know, Epidemio, Coleman, Fossa, a lot of the local contractors that, that we know have good reputations and will most likely be hiring a lot of these people. So I think, you know, we're in a good direction here. And the, working with the local truckers through a broker, probably Mendocino County, even though they're not local, we do hire a lot of local trucks, every other, you know, for every other job around here. So they have that connection. And rather than have Civic States call each trucker and get them lined up for the water trucks that end up, they're, they're able to go through that broker. And so they're working on negotiating some, some rates in that type right now. And so I think, I think we're going to see some success on this, but I still have more to take formal action for than that. One other thing that, you know, I talked to Aaron at Civic States and kind of worked out some details on this that I think will be worked out there, you know, the cleanup effort down there as Ray has described and we talked about here, taking the scrap iron, clean, you know, it's all rinsed off and take that, right now it's being hauled to, I have to take a line, what is?
Waste.
Yeah, they're taking, taking it from Middletown to there, and then from there, and the heaviest load has only been four tons. So it's, they're not, it's very light. It's all they can get because it's so twisted, you just can't get, you can't pack a load in there. And so they're, they're unloading it there, and then they're reloading it back into a bigger truck and then take it over to Mendocino County to put in a crusher. So we're trying to work out something right now with them to where Lake County Waste Solutions can actually have the big trucks down there in Middletown at a central location where they can haul it, shuttle it there. And they're not spending all that money. Civic States will actually save a lot of money in trucking costs by not having to transport, you know, small tonnage all the way to Lakeport and losing that truck off the job for a couple hours at a time. So they're working on that. That'll actually help them out a little bit. Then they can just take the scrap from there over St. Lena down to the Bay Area where it's an end-of-the-way. So, so, yeah, working with them on that.
So is there Smith?
I just want to bring up that somebody contacted me and they wouldn't tell me who they heard it from, but it was another local contractor that said, that local contractor was up watching some of the loads. And he said that some of the loads were just like half-full. And they were trucking them and he just wondered if they were getting paid by the load.
Getting paid by the hour.
Okay, well, same thing. So they could be taking twice as much as they were taking and spend half the time to do it. So that was his concern. So I think we just need to.
I observed that as well. And what, what I saw was, they're, they're cleaning up a job site, the house, and it's only half a load. It's whatever is at that job site. And so if they were to be able to take that, they could do it with 10-wheelers or with end dumps. They could take it, dump it to a closer area, just dump it and then move on to the next job site. It'll save them a lot of trouble. But what they're doing, they're sitting there all day waiting to pick through, you know, pipe and a washing machine here and there, whatever. It's, it's never, I don't see how they could ever get a full load, which is just 25 tons. They're not going to get a full load from a house site. So hopefully this will be a solution.
Or they use the transfer and fill up on end and then put the next job site.
Transfers are hard to use for, for scrap money because pipe gets hung up.
It don't, it don't work.
Right.
And typically transfers are not, not used for stuff that can dent the box. Boxes are small, they're thin, but they're, yeah.
So is there still?
No, actually, I saw the answer here. It was actually handed out earlier. I was wondering who this was to, directing towards and who was going to do the oversight. And I can see it's the office of emergency services. And recycling.
So, both of those, I guess, will take up that part of their job.
Well, you know, and I think the oversight is actually accomplished by us. You know, if somebody complains that they're not getting the job, you know, we can look into it. But like I said, it got off to a little bit of a slow start. But I think, I think the work that, you know, what I've, conversations that I've had with Cal recycle and Pacific States has been productive enough to where we can communicate to them. Because I, you know, to be honest with you, there are going to be people out there, I don't know, Lake County's not by itself in this, but if they hire 50% of the labor and, you know, some people don't pass a drug test, that's not Pacific State's problem or Cal recycle's problem. They just won't be on the job any longer. And I can't hold them responsible for that, for that percentage, if that percentage can't be filled because somebody can't pass a drug test. Or they just don't want to show up for work. So, it's going to be incumbent upon those that want the jobs to show up on time, work, put a full day's work in, and be able to pass a drug test. So, that's, you know, that's going to be on the employee.
My question went to who keeps the records. I mean, someone's got to keep count to get this fair. And I don't see anything here with regard to who's keeping the records.
Right now, Aaron McCarrick with Pacific States has done a pretty good job of making sure that employees that they're going to have are coming from Lake County address. She's gathered that information.
Speaker Comstock?
The other, you know, Pacific State's job for being held for all the unskilled too. I don't remember the amount.
Yeah. I had, I worked with County Office of Education to have a job fair last month, and they're going to actually have those once a month. And Pacific States was well-represented there to give people information for. But again, they're probably not going to be hiring individuals as much as they're going to be hiring the contractor. And the contractor can hire those individuals and make sure they show up if, then there's another, well, that was basically, the job fairs are going to be helpful for that too.
On this letter, we have each Board Member individually named. I'm going to assume that we're going to create a signature line and have each Board member sign before they leave the room.
Correct.
Anything else before we open up the public?
What I was going to say also to Jim's, to Jim's comment, is they can't, they have to go through that 40-hour.
Train.
So, Jim asked if he could get a job there, but.
I can't pass the test.
Which Jim? The drug test?
Yeah.
Any other member of the public who wants to speak on this item, which is pertaining to a support, a letter of support requesting at least 50% of our workforce cleanup fires, be local operators and truckers. Speaker Carr, your first and last name, correct?
Yes, again, that's Kim Carr. And as a disaster survivor, I can tell you that without a foundation to thrive, these people will not show up for work regularly. And I just can't emphasize enough how much they need that so that they can work and restore the economy.
Any other member of the public who wants to speak on this item?
I'm Ray Ravinsky from County Emergency and Urban Health Office. Thanks for doing this, Rob. The number of Lake County residents that completed that 40-hour course is 105, I was told. And, yeah, may I proceed? And may I get a copy of the letter when it's completed?
Here you go.
Thank you very much.
Any other member of the public who wants to speak on this item? Okay, CNN, I'll bring it back to the board for approval of the letter as presented.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, and we have a second all in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries five oh. Okay, let's go ahead and conclude with the last item, which is 5.1. This is Supervisor's Weekly Calendar Travel Reports. Speaker Comstock, would you like to go again?
Yes. Tomorrow morning, 9:00, APC and Lake Transit here Lakeport, Malibu, 1:00 by LAFCO. Thursday, I'm meeting with, she'll, in Middletown at 1:00, SBA, multiple constituent meeting Friday meeting with specific constituent. Item directly related to fire issues in Rancho's area. And Saturday, I have more constituent meetings. And Monday, then we get back to you.
Thank you. Speaker Smith?
Yes. Actually, today's my grandson's 18th birthday today. So, I'm feeling really old. APC, Lake Transit Authority meeting tomorrow, LAFCO tomorrow afternoon, Judge's Breakfast Thursday morning, election meeting on Thursday, Public, Public or Lake Community Collaborative meeting Thursday afternoon. And then I'm actually going to help my son for a couple of days in there somewhere. That's it.
Speaker Brown? Well, I have phone conference call after today's meeting regarding wildfire issues. Tomorrow morning, I have a meeting at 10:00 regarding housing issues. Matt, are we meeting with FEMA and that group like you do about it?
At 1:00.
At 1:00. Okay. So, I have that meeting at 1:00. So, I have a meeting at 10:00, another meeting at 1:00. And then there's a meeting tomorrow night on COB, I'm attending, fire issues. Thursday, I will be meeting with representatives from SBA. I hadn't gotten my schedule yet, but I'll do it at the same time. That way they can all do it.
You will, 1:00 in Middletown. I don't know if you could.
I'll just make sure that I'm there so that they can do the presentation one time. So, is that 1:00 where?
In the park area.
Okay. And then Friday, I have several meetings scheduled regarding fire on COB. But I also have a meeting with Chief Huggins from Kelseyville because we're working on some issues to begin notification of the communities around, and Tony's area too, Tony might want to be involved in this, for notification of those that have lots that need to be abated. They're not able to do it now because we don't need to out mowing and start another fire. But as soon as Cal Fire says that the burn ban is lifted, we need to go after these lots, these property owners aggressively to have them abate their own lots. And if not, then we'll figure out a way to abate it for them so that we don't, so that we don't have an issue in those communities like we've had. 17th Saturday, I have meetings all day Saturday as well. And the Lakeport Fire Department has their annual fundraiser that evening. I'll be attending that. 18th is my oldest grandson's 7th birthday.
Willian.
And then back in the office on Monday.
Thank you. Speaker Steel?
Yeah, maybe. Thank, my son's 50 years old, so that'll get a little bit. I have North Shore Business Association meeting tomorrow. And on 15th, not very good planning on my part, I have eight meetings with the tribes and others, Economic Forum, Mental Health Board. And on Friday, an all-day meeting with NAG people. 17th, I'll have Saturday, which is a town hall, 4:00 to 6:00. Everybody's invited. Simple concern. On the Sunday, the 18th, meeting with the constituent in High Valley with regard to what they believe were illegal water transfer issues. On Monday, Mental Health Advisory Board. And I thought I'd go to the COB Town Hall and listen in and back here.
I did want to, Speaker Brown? Yeah, I thank you for bringing that up. I had it in my mind, not on my calendar. 19th on Monday is, again, I'll tell, say this again, I'll send a mail out to everyone concerned that we're having a meeting on COB regarding tree removal and reforestation at 6:00 at the COB Elementary School House.
I'm planning a meeting though.
My calendar at the gender view after today's meeting. I have meetings with staff this week as well. Also attending the LAFCO meeting in Lakeport on Wednesday. Constituent meetings on Thursday and Friday. Hope I'm going to be able to attend the Lakeport Firefighters' Dinner on Saturday. And then next Monday, preparing for board meeting, and back here on Tuesday, the 20th. And then, unless any Board Members have any other items, this concludes our public meeting, and we will stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here and being present and being engaged in this process. Appreciate it. Have a great afternoon.